We're green now, so I want to welcome everybody to the City of Chattanooga City Council Work Session on the New Zoning Code Update, General Overview, Timeline, Council Discussion, Concerns, and Suggestions. So if you look into the packet provided for you, you'll see that we've got a little bit of a timeline, we're going to try and stay to it. What I've tried to do is working with staff is anticipate a lot of questions that we've heard come up throughout the process and be able to address those. So if you'll allow staff to kind of move through some of the slides that they have prepared, you might find that the questions that you had will be answered. Before we start, we'd like to recognize Mr. Scott McCulpin joining us, who is our Boza Chairman. We appreciate you being here this afternoon.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So Dan, Chris, and Karen are going to kind of take over the reins here for the next little bit. If we can hold up on questions, we'll let them get through their slides and then we can pick up. But if you have something that's burning, feel free at any time, I'll be watching for any questions, we're happy to interrupt. Dan?
Thank you, Chairman, of this committee, I guess. We're going to be, it'll be Karen, Chris, and I going through this today. I just want to start with saying, this is a very exciting day for us. This is a big deal for the city. I want to recognize Karen Rennick has done an amazing job of ushering this with our consultant. We started this a couple of years ago. But also Brian Schultz, Brian's staff, Emily Wood, Cassie Klein, who just took over as the head of our Historic Preservation Planner position, so she's moving to a new job, and of course, Chris Anderson. We've had a lot of coordination with other departments. I'm going to give a little intro and then I'm going to, we're going to try to tag-team, triple-team this. So the first thing, I'm going to skip over this slide really quick because Councilwoman Gottlieb has said we will have a meeting next month to talk about Plan Chattanooga. But I want you all to know that we have done a lot of work with Plan Chattanooga, lots of projections of growth, trying to understand our housing needs with our other city staff that work on housing, a lot of public engagement. We have a new legal team supporting us with city attorney, we can talk about that. And a lot of this has to do with an end game of trying to figure out how we fund future transportation and capital projects because we are going to grow and we've got to find ways through our planning process to find more funds for a lot of, a lot of needs in the future. On the right-hand side, just a little quick thing, Plan Chattanooga, we recently got a summary of some of our public involvement, and this was our second round. We had 585 participants, about 1,200 and plus written comments, and 1,000 items placed on maps. So in about a month, I'm going to be getting, coming here and talking to you all about area plans for all, every part of the City of Chattanooga. The other things-
Dan, what do you think about 1,000 items on the map?
Our software that we are using for public engagement allows someone to go onto a map and put a little dot and then describe what, like, I want a sidewalk in my neighborhood, and they can put that little dot on the map. That's basically just trying to give them an opportunity to say things about places.
Okay.
The other thing I'd just say is since my two-year anniversary this month, and try to remind you why you hired me.
I was wondering.
In addition to making, in addition to trying to modernize and make everything incredibly wonderful in the City of Chattanooga, which-
Can we think it over? I don't know, maybe we should think it. I think we're getting him off track. Go ahead.
We also support Hamilton County, CARDA, the Housing Authority, the Chattanooga Airport, had a meeting this morning with the Chamber of Commerce, North Shore, Midtown Connects, Downtown Alliance, CBL. I want you to reach out to anybody you know in this community that cares about planning and growth, and if they are not connected to us and to me personally, let them know. Because that is our goal here. We are absolutely doing incredible work with the city departments and with our staff. Example, the RTP, that last bullet, Tennessee DOT cares that we pass that last week.
Yep.
All of your gas tax that is, that you pump into your car and send to Washington, when it comes back to you, to Tennessee DOT, they couldn't spend any money in our county if we didn't adopt that RTP. SS4A is our new Safety Action Plan Grant that we just got. We haven't even started it yet, but I, everything about Vision Zero and pedestrian safety and community safety around transportation, we're going to get into that this year. And then I'm sure you all have heard about our rail study grant that was just received. And then I think this week, the Housing Authority, we've been supporting them for over a year on their CNI grant that they're submitting to HUD. So we do a lot of work that you all probably don't hear about from day to day. So again, next month, we'll come and talk more about Plan Chattanooga, but it's underway and I'm very excited about what we'll be able to show you in the next month. We started this zoning ordinance update with some goals, and again, I won't go through all of these, but it's a comprehensive update of the code. And it's, it's intended to really out, you know, modernize and remove some old language, the code's somewhere between 50 and 60 years old. We should be updating the code every year, or at least reviewing it every year, and we will do that in the future going forward. So what is zoning? We have a little handout here somewhere, if anybody's interested, a little 101. But again, I just tell folks, everything that you think about related to jobs and housing has probably got something to do with zoning. So it's everything to do with structures and land use, where you might put a structure on a lot, how big it can be, regulates other things like site development, parking. But these three pictures, you know, that very attractive McDonald's with the new, nice architectural features there, but even, you know, office buildings, manufacturing buildings, and then that bottom picture is a triplex. And that's something we're going to have to talk about more in the future. We should talk more about how we've developed good, you know, small multifamily projects. So again, the zoning ordinance is regulated through the code, which we're talking about today. But a lot of folks don't know that when you come in and you're at those meetings every month, they're actually submitted an application to change the zoning map. And so that's a lot of what we deal with on a month-to-month basis, but today, we're just talking about the code, or we'll actually talk about the map, too. We won't be changing anything on the map. Quick timeline, goes back a few years, actually, you know, the zoning assessment started back in 2021. But we are excited to be here today with council. And I feel like, you know, the process up till now has been very inclusive of all the departments, of other stakeholders, and, you know, we're just in a good position today. So some, couple meetings that we've had, and one coming up this week at the Family Justice Center. We'll have another public meeting, and then we will have a virtual meeting on February 1st. And we've had a lot of development stakeholder meetings, a lot of input, again, not just with stakeholders on the outside, but with all of our city departments, and still getting some comments here and there. So again, we don't have a firm adoption schedule. We have this work session today, and as you all directed, we're, you know, going to take this a step at a time, but we feel confident that we can, you know, get through this today and then be on a good trajectory for the next month or two, or whatever it takes to get it adopted. So again, I kind of touched on this. We expect ongoing engagement with departments and developers and engineers and property owners and residents and council. We want this to be a living document. And to some degree, we have made improvements, you know, we've done things like destruction and vacation rental and other kinds of, we, council adopted accessory dwelling units last year, but we want to, we want to, we want that to be something that we continue in the future. So we are going to do quarterly reports after you, after this is adopted, we will do quarterly reports to council, and we'll do a big annual review, and we'll continue to do a lot of explanatory documents and websites. There's some good models out there around the country of cities that are in the same process as we are right now, and there are websites and things they use to help the public and others understand what's happening with the zoning ordinance. And I think that's my cue to switch gears to someone.
If I can real quick, I'd like to recognize Mr. Alan Richardson from District 6 Boza. Thanks for being here today.
I'll be switching gears. One of the, we talked a little bit about process and mapping, that we're talking about the draft ordinance now. We have been kind of planning for the mapping, doing kind of some exploratory research, but we've tried to be clear in the public meetings that this ordinance and adoption of this ordinance will not automatically rezone property. We've been trying to be clear and have a handout that says, stay involved, that is coming, to let people know that mapping will be occurring, but for the purposes of kind of the discussion, when we have the public meeting, we're really focusing on the zoning ordinance itself. But mapping is going to happen. We're calling it equivalency mapping. This might not be what we, we stick with, it's a little bit more of a technical term. We did have a, a call on it with kind of a, I guess, an expert. We've also had a call with Phil, who is also an expert, and this is where, kind of where we're heading with, that we are proposing that we move all property and move to new zoning at the same time. We're going to end on, we don't have timing of that set yet, but that the old zoning ordinance will go away, that Chapter 38 will go away, have an effective, and we'll have an effective date for the new zoning ordinance. So we'll only have one zoning ordinance in effect. We don't have to worry about having Chapter 38 old, Chapter 38 new, with the idea of doing it all at once. All zoning conditions that are in place would carry over during this mapping process. We will have, we're calling it equivalent with the idea that this old zone, and we'll have, I'll show a table here in a minute, that this old zone is equivalent to this new zone. We will have some documentation kind of showing what the old zone looks like and what the new zone looks like to be, to try to be as transparent as possible to show how those two compare. We are working on a citywide notification process, and this is something we're going to draft and work with Phil on about letting people know this kind of this one-for-one equivalency zoning. There's going to be a lot of carryover. I don't know that many people are going to notice a difference that their zoning has changed, but we do want to make sure we have the appropriate notification process. And also working on timing of implementation of that new zoning map. So this is something that we're going to make sure that we do a little bit more research on. The consultant said that this one-for-one, that this old zone becomes this new zone is the most common form of mapping new zoning ordinances. We're just going to tighten everything up on this. And then the next slide?
Well, if I could just say one thing about our, you know, again, this is something fairly new to us, but our peers in the state, be it Memphis, Knoxville, Nashville, have been doing this for some time. We've been through now, we're on our third expert zoning attorney. We had Sam Edwards, who's a legend in the state, and then George Dean, who's a legend in the state, who have both retired. So we're on our third legend now with Sean Henry. And again, so we're getting good legal advice about how we proceed, but I want you to know that we're doing this in a way that absolutely protects landowners. We're not going to, we don't want anyone to end up disgruntled, if we can avoid that. I have said from the beginning, I do not want this to be a divisive process. We need to do this in a way that's, helps folks understand what's changing and as much as possible, obviously, follows all state and local legal requirements. But I guess my point is just that, again, I want you all to feel confident in terms of this mapping and the legal aspects of it. Sorry, Karen.
Dr. Burris?
One burning question. This, this slide is really important.
Correct.
And I don't want to just blow over it because that's where a lot of the questions I get are coming.
Correct.
Okay. So for clarification, you say, first dot, second dot, all zoning conditions carry over during the equivalency. Don't the conditions carry over forever?
Yes.
All I'm saying is, I know that's true, that could be misleading to people, that wording.
Okay, we'll flag that and to be really clear on-
It's period. If there are conditions on property, that panics people when they say it, I would put a period there.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that, and also, we're going to try to be clear and have a, on the map, it'll show your new zone, but it'll show that it has conditions, some sort of overlay, to be clear, so you can, that that's carrying over.
Yeah.
So, conditions stay?
Yeah. You want to, you want to say, all conditions stay.
Remain.
Period. You don't wordsmith it because then people get concerned, and rightfully so.
Yes, thank you.
A question, and I came in 15 minutes later, I had another appointment, I'm sorry. So when we've discussed the fact that nothing's going to change for your current zoning, if you are R3, you live as if you are R3 until you decide you want to rezone your property. But if all property is moved to new zoning at one time, and my property gets moved to traditional neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, is that what you're saying, that after our area plans, that then suddenly, North Chattanooga or North Glen is going to have a new overlay of zone?
Unrelated to area plans.
Right.
So you're, you're zoning today, let's say you're R3 wherever. When this is adopted and when you're mapped, we're going to try to map to an equivalent to R3, unrelated to the area plans.
Can you go to the next slide, too?
Sure.
The next slide, Mike. So yes, so the idea is the old zoning goes away, and the zoning map is going to be updated to the most, the most similar zone. So if you're currently R1, and we kind of flagged it because we've got R1, the proposed zone would be RN16, which is a 6,000 square foot lot. We also have an RN15, which is a 5,000 square foot lot. So if you're zoned RT1, the newest equivalent zone would be the RN2T. There are quite a few, you'll see at the bottom, those traditional neighborhood development zones, those are new zones, those are kind of more of our urban zone mix. We are going to talk about when those would come into play. But the idea is that moving over your, there will be a process, and we'd go to Planning Commission, and we'd come back to council to say, we are now moving, we have a new ordinance done, we are now moving zoning to that new ordinance. So it would be all the properties at once, and we would update the zoning map portion.
And the reason to do it that way is because most of the City of Chattanooga zoning is not going to change as a result of Plan Chattanooga. If you're a developed neighborhood, if you're anything downtown or adjacent, you know, most of it's form-based code, we're not touching form-based code right now, even the, the actual ordinance, we're leaving that till later in the year. But, but Plan Chattanooga absolutely is going to come in and say, there's places where we would like council to consider changing the zoning, and we'll identify those in the plans and then bring that to, I guess, this trend. Our attorneys want, you know, and I agree, we want to be on the smartest legal standing with regard to anybody's current zoning. Sorry.
And I'm going to give you, for instance, Doug, with the two new zones of the R16, R-6, R-5, Hill City Lot, I feel like that's probably going to be a neighborhood that may say they're an R1 right now, but they may look like an R15.
Right.
How are we going to engage that community? And I mean, go out and engage, and don't just wait for a survey to come in. I mean, we need to actively engage them to see where we want an R15 or R6 or whatever that may be. What, what does that look like? And I think that's the biggest, I think, process question that a lot of people have right now.
So, and again, Hill City is an example. It's an older neighborhood with a lot of lots that are, I guess, lots of record, and so-
And there's some that have large lots that could be divided with the proper square footage.
So, so I'm assuming most of that would be in the R15, because the district, we're defining R15 as of today, as I think the urban-
Overlay.
Urban overlay. So they would be in R15 as proposed today.
If they're R1 now, for the ones that are R1 now.
So they don't really have a say, or?
Well, that, that doesn't really change anything, in a way. If, if someone has a 10,000 square foot lot and sewer on Hill City today, if they were R, and let's say it's a, it's not a lot of record, it's just a 10,000 square foot lot, today, they could not subdivide that because it's, there would be a 7,500 square foot minimum. After this, in theory, if they, it's a perfectly square lot, they could subdivide, they might have to tear down the house if it's sitting in the middle of the lot, but they could in theory, but it would, it's just going to depend on-
What I'm asking is, Doug, you're saying they don't have, they don't even get a say whether they want the six or the five? Or you're saying-
Nothing, nothing changes for them. They're, they're not, they're, they're, they will transition to a new zone, but the only reason it would change anybody in Hill City is if they, let's say they're not a lot of record, so they're not a small lot, they're a bigger lot, it's 10,000 square foot lot. Only those folks that had 10,000 or greater could really avail themselves of a smaller lot size.
Or if they had four lots in one of the, if they had four 7,500 square foot lots-
Your answer is mathematically, I think, not to put words in Councilman Henderson's-
About public engagement.
I think his question is-
Public input.
Public input and engagement.
Sure.
And what does that process look like? Because they may be RN16 and RN15 may be on the table, and you may be debating between five and six, and the neighborhood says, you know what, bring us five.
So we could do two things. One is, we can map every one of these places before, and before anything changes, and actually look at where all the lots of record are, and absolutely go to the Hill City neighborhood and have a conversation with them. I don't think there's anything at this point that we've decided how to proceed.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking, how are we going to actively pursue their input? That's so that they understand that they'll have some input at some point as to whether they're going to be a six or a five, or. And while we're here, I would like to see a 750, or-
7,000.
7,500 square foot zone added. I don't know about everybody else, but most of my district is in kind of the rural area suburbs, and the characteristic of those neighborhoods are 7,500 square feet. I would like to at least have that option.
And I think we have a slide that talks about that just now.
Okay.
Yes, I think then this-
Hang on, Karen. I know we were trying to get through these-
Oh, no, no.
No, we're in no hurry.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're saying that, I have a lot of old neighborhoods here, too, and I've got Brainerd Hills, I've got Belvoir, I've got established neighborhoods. So pretty much for, number one, everything stays the same, the, the name changes, that's the first thing, right? When we start yes-budding is when people's hackles go up. I'm watching Allen, and I know the people in my neighborhood and out Hickory Valley, and I mean, I'm thinking, and they're, they're progressive, nice people. What I had said earlier, and, and Chris and I had talked earlier, I don't think people are trying to be narrow at all. I think there have been some pretty big nightmare cases when people have come in for zoning, and, and they want to know that their neighborhood is going to stay the same, stay the same it is. What I'm hearing is that the neighborhood's going to stay the same, but if you have, if you have property of a certain size, there may be the option to put more than one structure on. Is that okay?
We could absolutely do some analysis to see where there's lots that are above that.
Okay. And the, and here's the rub, does that mean the neighborhood will have no say-so in that? It can have, it's, it's automatically of right?
If we change the zoning, if they say any, if they zoning has changed.
Okay, and that's where I think-
During the mapping process.
That's correct.
Not, not in the first round.
The mapping process is where the critical-
But they would also have to have sewer.
This opens the door to it. I just need to know how to answer correctly, because when you've got old established neighborhoods, this doesn't mean not nice people. And they, they're great to work with. It's that there have been some nightmares in the past, and we're not really good at enforcement, and so they want to know that-
Can I just say, that's the case today, though. If somebody today had a 15,000 square foot lot, they could subdivide it today, right? I mean, they, this is just, so you would, it's all dependent on, you know, where you have outliers in a neighborhood. Now, a lot of your neighborhoods, there's no outliers, there's, I mean, there are some unusual circumstances, for sure.
This, this will automatically be of right, not of hearing, correct?
No, but that's true today. If you have a 15,000 square, a third of an acre lot, and you have sewer, in theory, you could go down to two 7,500 square foot lots with just a subdivision.
All right. And, and the neighbors have no say-so about that.
Correct, and it wouldn't go to council, it's just a-
It does not go to council.
Yeah.
And that's the notification list that Brian sends out every month, those minor plats.
Oh, the plats?
Yes, so that's an example of the subdivision.
Yeah, I got that.
So that's what's happening, yeah.
But I think what her concern is, is a little bit of my concern, like, if they've got a 10,000 square foot house, oh, 10,000 square foot lot right now, they couldn't divide it. But if you mapped it to a five, they could-
But they don't have to have sewer.
Right, but then all of a sudden, you're starting to change the way a neighborhood looks.
Yeah.
Who, is there a process, do we approve the initial mapping?
Yes.
Yes.
It'll go to the Planning Commission.
So we'll approve the initial map, and we can look on there then and say-
That's correct.
We don't agree with-
Well, we can flag as many of these things as you want us to flag, too.
And it, it sounds like we need a good frequently asked questions about, I was R1 and now I'm RN1, what does that mean? And to be really clear, the only permitted dwelling still in the RN1 zone is single unit detached, but we need to be a little bit clearer on some of the other aspects, including lot size.
That, that's all I'm saying. Whenever you use hedging words, people rightfully, I think, have concerns, and so I think that, yeah, you want that, in other, mine would be RN1, Belvoir would be RN1, Brainerd Hills would be RN1, it would go to RN1. Underneath that, does that change the rights? Is, underneath that, are there any risks, or does that come with the mapping? That's the next stage.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Well, I think it's partly what is different. So can someone build something other than a single-family house? You could build a church, you could build a school, the things you can normally build, but we just need to be really clear, knowing someone's probably not going to flip through the whole ordinance to try to pull that out.
The square footage of your lot is what's going to be critical.
Is the main different, yeah.
The square footage of your lot is what's going to be critical.
And see, we have a lot of old, big lots.
Yeah.
And we've already done some work at 5,000 and 6,000 square foot lots, so we just, we will build off of that then.
Okay.
Because that's really, when you have a 10,000 and you can go to two fives versus only one six, I think that's where we need to be aware.
I have a restorative activity at all. It's, I really have it.
You're just trying to be prepared for the questions.
What I've heard is, is righteous questions, and I don't have the answers, so thank you.
Yes, we'll do a frequent, we'll try to do a frequently asked question that hits lot size, too, and explains that.
Matt Boucher?
Thank you. I'm, I'm a little stumped at how useful this could be if we divorce the rezoning, the rewriting of our zoning code from our area plans that are also in development. And I say that as a representative of an area that has an area plan that's more than 20 years old. So our zoning reflects 50 years ago, and so if all we do is take this and make it look just the same, then I feel like what I'm facing is another decade of slow and steady rezoning requests that will slow the goals that we have. I mean, you know, Councilman Henderson and I represent areas right across the street from each other. He's in Hill City, and I got the post office on, in North Chattanooga, but in the redistricting, Hill City will move into District 2. And they've been encouraged to participate in the, the Plan Chattanooga work, and what is the vision for that? That's concerning to me.
We have a slide, the next slide, the one you just saw is that.
I'm like a prophet today.
Yeah, and so that's the whole discussion we had with staff about when do you map? And that's where we got a lot of good-
I was just going to say, I mean, your, your question's an excellent question, and I think what we're trying to do is just keep us in a very strong legal direction, so we know what, why we're making changes. And so I think in terms of going forward, we absolutely need citywide, a one plan that knows that every, every area of the city is at the same time, so that we have a vision for the entire city. And then we build on that with our regulations, and that's where, what puts us in a better legal position, if we have to tell somebody no for something when somebody comes in and wants to do something. So I completely agree that we want to use our planning process to guide our zoning. Let me just go to the slide Karen's talking about.
And then that's the future. We want to implement Plan Chattanooga, and so this is where we spend a lot of time as staff, saying what's, what's most legal, what is, what's, when working in the timeframe. So our, so equivalency now, the whole city's getting rezoned to somewhat equivalent to what the zone they have. We're re- We're resetting the base. But we know we've got plans, and we want to implement our plans. So we're going to have our air plans, our place types, which are saying, this is the vision for the future. Instead of the one by one zoning, there's an opportunity to really go in and implement the plans with the new zoning. So Dan put on here that that's going to need a little bit more work, because that's when you're really talking about your property maybe changing. So an example, we have a transit oriented development overlay that is intended to support CARDA and have land use supports high frequency transit. Well, we're going to have to wait for the plan, and then we're going to have to map the overlay, is an example of something that's going to need more work to implement the plans. But while we're doing that, we have one zoning, we don't have the old zoning, the new zoning, and then plan it, one you're implementing. So we're trying to stage it, but doing that by setting the base to the new zone and then going in and implementing Plan Chattanooga, because that's going to take a little bit more work, we're thinking.
And we want it to be, well, in the case of your district, I don't, we will, next month, have a draft plan for your district. A new, you know, we've been trying to just follow a very structured process. At that point, we can sit down with you and all your neighborhoods and talk about what you want to protect and what might be willing to see change. But again, I think what we're trying to do through this process is assure folks that nothing's changing until council's ready for it to change. You know, and so the zone, we don't want anyone's zoning to change or anything like that until council's ready to go. Chris, stay here. I am perfectly happy to stand up. I'm going to let Karen and Chris go first.
Oh, okay, I think there's just a few more slides, and then, Dan, will you ask if we can get one more printout from the chair?
Here's one.
Okay, sure, okay. So we're going to start with the no proposed changes. You might have seen some of this already. We are not proposing, the new regulation doesn't have any change to short term vacation rental regulations. That is not part of the update. There's also, accessory dwelling unit regulations are the same. I did put in here that coming up at the next Planning and Zoning Committee, we will discuss an ordinance amendment proposed by staff coming out of the one year review, which, and there's some cleanup as part of that, so if council acts on that, we will update the ADU. There's also no change to the Form Based Code. There are some minor references in the draft document to the Form Based Code. We're going to remove those, just to be really clear, this does not impact Form Based Code. So we're just kind of going in, I'm going to say it's five or six references maybe in there. They don't change Form Based Code, they're more of a reference, so we're taking them out, so we can say that there's no change. Yes.
Hang on one second. Councilwoman, can I?
Thank you, Chair. In relation to the short term vacation rentals, are we grouping in bed and breakfast the same as that? Because it shows on the code here that some with no reception facilities is permitted, and then with it, it's a special exception. But are we saying bed and breakfast is the same as the short term vacation?
It should be different. We were very purposeful, because bed and breakfast has given us a lot of, and are you having an event there, or are you just renting out your house, you are renting out your house and you're the bed and breakfast? It should be different and very distinct, was, we were trying to be purposeful about that, but we can go in and give it another review, that this is not a short term vacation rental. It should talk about someone residing on site. But we will, we will double check that. But we spent more time on that than the consultants were expecting on. And then trying to figure out, if you're having an event, that usually means that there's a lot more activity and something else needs to happen there. But I will double check that.
Because I could see how, since council said we weren't ready to move citywide, that how people get used. Oh, I'm just going to be eating breakfast, to kind of skirt around.
It was not intended to, so Plan, that's intended to be a different use altogether. But we will, we will double check that that is clear, and also notify Phil's team.
It's defined separately in the current code as well.
And then, but thank you, yes, that's a great catch. And then was there another question, one on the slide?
Well, mine was the same one, how the bed and breakfast related to this. Karen, before, a bed and breakfast had to be in an R three. And now we are permitting it in the R.
Yes, and I'm going to, let me pull up bed and breakfast.
RN residential. So I'm not sure how we're defining it different, that it looks different than a short, just a short term vacation rental.
We'll double, we will double check that, because right now, bed and breakfast is a single unit dwelling where resident owner provides lodging for a daily fee and prepares meals for guests. It may or may not have reception facilities, and then when you look at the land use table, I believe it breaks up the bed and breakfast reception facilities and with no reception facilities. So a single unit residence where the owner is providing meals is permitted.
So if they provide muffins in the morning?
We'll double check.
Are you offering?
Yes, and maybe we're very clear that they make the distinction between the short term vacation. Well, the intention was not, the intention was to make no change to short term vacation rental. But bed and breakfast have had a little bit of overlap with them, and then when they move into hosting events, they become, can become more of a, you know, troublesome land use.
Hang on, Chair. About Chair?
My question was about accessory dwelling units. Hello, everybody, I'm sorry for my tardiness. But I came right on time for this question. So when we talk about accessory dwelling units, we have, is it still going to be, of course, detached and attached ADUs? And with those, for instance, let's say we keep an R one, let's say it's just a residential home, they want to rezon it. Do they have to rezon now to get the ADU?
The requirement is for a single family detached, so if that use is not zoned, it's used unless I'm missing.
So what about attached?
ADUs are by right in there.
Yes, right, for if you have a single family detached structure.
Okay, so what about attached structure?
Same, there's no change to that.
Unless they want to, so I guess my issue is, let's say they're in a residential, just a regular R one. They went to rezon it, rezoned it failed, and they came back and did it as a residential attached, which is the same thing.
People think it's a duplex, perhaps.
Right, or two family homes.
Sorry, yes, actually, it's two unit. Thank you, I need that reminder. And so, and it's like the councilwoman, Karen, she's always saying.
And so if they are doing that, but that, but it's still, that's still not the space for it in a sense, like that's still R one space that they tried to rezon, they couldn't get a rezon, so then they came back and found this caveat to make it an attached.
That's correct.
It becomes this thing. Is there something that addresses that here? And I guess I was looking over.
Right, so council, I guess in the last year adopted the ADU, allow every home in Chattanooga can do an ADU now. They can do it in a garage.
Attached or detached.
Yeah, they can, you can close in a garage, you can do it in an attic, a basement, so you can add them.
For now.
It's a good thing. I mean, it really is. I mean,
Cut it.
We have a good report we just did on ADUs that looks at all of the other construction. And we can present that to y'all again if we need to. There's some good things happening around that today.
Just remembering this process, you're reducing the size of lots, so it gives you less room for an ADU as well. So that's got to be the reason for the adjustment in size considerations. When you go down fifteen hundred feet from seventy-five hundred to six thousand, and go down twenty-five hundred feet to five thousand.
And since Phil brought that up, I'll tag on that first. Yes, and there is a maximum, maximum building coverage. So yes, the lot size has been, and there are reduced lot sizes, but the maximum building coverage went in there with the idea of making sure there's still adequate green space and setbacks. So we, those were kind of combined, and a big thanks to Hanika, who did a lot of detailed magic, trying to figure out how that would really work. And so she was very helpful, kind of running the math. But the ADU, I think we are hoping or thinking that the other requirements of the ADU about where the door can be would making it still appear to be a single family home. And not, I know there's, we have the person on Forty-Ninth Street, I think, that that is helping, that reinforce that that is not a two unit development, or they're thinking that there's a bait and switch. We're thinking that the requirements, and I believe it's to the side, Brian, that we don't have the two front doors.
Yeah.
That is intended to help with that, to reinforce that as accessory to that main one house. And we have lots of pictures of what actually is being developed, and so we'll show those as part of, tied in with the ADU amendment coming your way. And it could be that that will help inform whatever decision you all want to make, just showing those pictures.
We have a great presentation around this as well. We did it for the planning commission, we can bring it to council.
Okay, yeah, that works. Thank y'all so much, I appreciate it. Just a few more no proposed changes. Bill, I mean, is there a lot of the goals, or trying to meet the goals that are of the project that we're set up? One is that if building code requires a standard, the new zoning ordinance either defers to it or references that. One of the things is that there's a lot of overlap, and it's maybe hard to enforce. And also, the idea was just less regulation in a sense of something else is regulating it, we didn't need to regulate it differently. Sure, and state law, state law has lots of exemptions for land uses, and we want to be particularly sensitive to those. That should be addressed in the code. The notification process for rezoning request does not change. So the sign, notifying neighborhood associations, legal notice in the paper, all of that is staying the same. I think we do want to broaden it to make sure we can also email neighborhood associations, because they've done such a good job getting neighborhood associations up to date, so I think we might make that tweak. Land Development Office still enforces regulations, and there's no substantial change to the role of the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals is coming from state legislation, so make sure we understand that. And so Mr. McCulpin already gave some guidance on making sure we have something addressing irregular lots, which we made a note of. Sounds like something the board needs, and we'll just make sure we have that adequately addressed in there.
Karen, on that note, real quick, I know this is a council work session, but since some Bozeman members have taken time to come and visit with us, do you have any questions regarding any changes to responsibilities for Boz at this time? If not, we'll keep going.
Just real briefly, as we deliberate, this training of staff is key. This has got to be, I mean, huge, huge. Yep, I would assume that all the professional organizations have their own training mechanisms, but staff needs to absolutely understand this.
And I think we have planned, Bron's been working on his work program, and I think a big part of that is making sure we are having plenty of discussion about the new code as we're moving forward.
There'll be a lot of internal training, and we've also decided to do some external training for professionals who work with the code, just to make everyone on the same page and aware of what the changes are.
Okay, there are no, and I should say, no new tree protection regulations. This isn't a, the landscape ordinance and the zoning ordinance is not a kind of a standalone tree protection ordinance. The work that it does is really through the landscape ordinance, and we can get into that. And there's no additional steep slope or flood plain regulations. So these are all items that are usually of particular interest, so just want to be clear that if we have protections in place, we should be maintaining those, including the standard flood plain, floodway protections. But there, there's no kind of a new additional standalone section here.
Karen, I'll have to ask, no changes to the steep slope vegetation component?
The last time we talked about it, I made a note that I need to double check that there's been absolutely no change. So we'll be able to confirm that. There should be no change.
That's awesome, thank you.
One thing I will say, I'm not going to leave the steep slopes with this, but you know, again, through Plan Chattanooga, we're trying to evaluate lots and lots of issues. And out of that process will come things that we'll talk about with zoning maps, but also potentially other policy directions from city council. So we're all about trying to cooperate or get on board if we want to do tree protection regulations or any other kind of regulation, we're happy to do that. We haven't been asked to do that. But clearly, we've got plenty of staff. I would tell folks, we've got great data. So those are things that we definitely can do in the future.
Can I do a follow up with that? I think you brought up one that has become important, at least in my area, the clear cutting, enforcing of clear cutting. Unfortunately, all our citizens don't feel the same way about trees. And very often, we get into clear cutting issues once everything's been clear cut. Okay, and the damage is done. I guess, I think that becomes very, very important as you go forward. Our trees are very important. And, you know, some developer coming in and then saying, oh, my bad, but the trees are gone. And that's not okay. So what are you, what is your thinking? I don't think we should wait to-
There's a tree commission and tree advocates and talking about over the last year. Again, we haven't been asked to formally get involved, but if we're-
Well, I'm asking you to formally get involved.
No, I think, I don't think it should be just Public Works or a tree commissioner, anybody that talks about this. I think we need to have, you know, all of us together have a good conversation about it.
We've begun, Councilwoman, working on an ordinance to present to this council for your consideration. It specifically deals with this issue. It's just separate from the zoning code. It's not a zoning issue. It belongs somewhere else in the code. You will see a tree protection ordinance coming in the next few months.
Soon, do you think, Chris? Because we're seeing as we're doing more and more developing, gosh, in my district, I'll look one day and the next day it's totally clear. The damage is done. When it, when they could have still built and kept trees, you know. So I would urge you, and I'm not sure what you guys need, but I would urge you to do something sooner rather than later.
We're in the drafting process now, and we're using our existing Chattanooga Tree Commission, who are appointed and confirmed by this body, appointed by the mayor, confirmed by this body, to help us. They're the experts. So to help us, we've been working with them for the last few months. I expect we'll have something within the next two to three months for your consideration.
If I may add to what Councilmember Burris is saying, my previous conversations about where the tree ordinance is headed have led me to understand that the majority of the work is going to focus on trees on public land, when we really need something that addresses how we treat trees on private land.
This addresses both.
Fabulous.
Now, our ability to address trees on public land obviously is greater than our ability to address on private. But we have ways to do both, and this will address both.
Glad to hear that.
Okay, and then vested property rights, this is, I guess about ten years ago, the state legislature-
Twenty fourteen, yes.
Passed language on vested property rights. And then when we talk about the new ordinance going into effect, we did this with Form Based Code. We just have a time where people can vest under their current zone, and that'll be part of the adoption process. I think we gave ninety days or six months during Form Based Code. And then again, of course, all rezoning decisions are by city council. There's no change to that.
Now for what is changing. So we currently have eight residential zones. Only six of them really get used commonly. The new draft has fourteen residential zones. And I want to step back and say, we're, we have a new code not to continue the status quo, but to improve on our zoning, and because our current zoning code doesn't work for Chattanooga in 2024. So these new zones are not designed to keep everything the same forever. They are designed to make a city that works for everyone and is welcoming to everyone and provides housing choice across the city. So going to fourteen residential zones, including those five traditional neighborhood zones that are new, will accommodate more types of housing. It's not going to be imposed on any neighborhood without their wishes and input. But it does offer, you know, as I'm often saying, more tools in the toolbox. Right now, we've got a rusted mismatched box of tools, and we've bought, we got a new one for Christmas, and they all match, and they're all shiny, and they all work together. And that's why the names make more sense together, and they're in a uniform style.
Chris, the most used residential change, it doesn't even have the word residential in it.
That's right.
Urban general commercial.
And there will not be UGC in the new code. And, you know, UGC, as we all know, has been overused to get greater density in neighborhoods that are purely residential. And that's not what this council wants. You've indicated many, many times, that's not your desire. So UGC is actually going to be replaced by two zones, CMU one and two, commercial mixed use one and two. And they will be focused on the actual, you know, primarily commercial use of what was UGC, not intended to be a primarily residential district. And we're accomplishing that because some of the new residential zones allow for more than just single family and, or single unit and two unit attached homes. So- Yes, sir.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you explain to me what's the difference with the code and a halfway house and the group home thing? Because this is where we have special exceptions for a halfway house, but the group home is permitted in the areas where it's ultimately the same thing. But, and we went through this a couple of times with Dan and I, that the community, they get confused by it because the state says that they can operate a halfway house or group homes. And they don't even have to come to the state, to the city for any kind of regulation. So I think I'm really confused too about that. Why do they even get to bypass us and just can operate? But it's permitted in some and then you got to get a special exception when it comes to the halfway house. So why is it that way?
Karen has the definitions.
On that part of it. Uh, that is the case that we were discussing previously on whether it is operated as a nonprofit or for profit use. If it is a nonprofit use, up to eight individuals plus three caregivers can live in a, a location on here, uh, to provide that, that purpose. And it's been based in the statute based upon whether someone has some type of disability, whether it be based upon some sort of physical, mental disability that they may have. And that's, that's the issue. And that under state law is prohibited from, uh, coming before you or the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those are the types of things. If it is a for profit use, those have to be done by a special exceptions permit right now under the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And, um, so group home, and it ends, the whole definition ends with a group home with eight or fewer residents. It's considered a single unit dwelling and then there's some more information. But a halfway house current in the new code is defined as residential facility for persons who have been institutionalized for criminal conduct. And you either require a group setting to facilitate the transition to society, have been ordered to such facilities by the court as a condition of parole or proba- probation.
Okay, because we got halfway houses that people aren't ordered to go, but they find a place to go to be housed and they consider them as halfway houses. And I, and I don't, the definition for me is like more criminalizing than the individual than it needs to be. Because you have people that don't even go to prison or jail or experience incarceration. However, they utilize a halfway house. I don't care. We kind of humanize the language a little better.
Yes, so we'll look at, um, we'll make sure group home is, you know, with the, you know, with the, um, situation you've been working through. And then halfway house, we can look and see, um, and we did talk about even referencing state law. State law requires something, making sure we're following state law. But yes, we will take a look at that. We did spend a lot of time with trying to make sure that, um, group homes had the, group homes in general had the lowest barriers. Um, but we'll, we'll double check the language. Yes.
We certainly want to be sensitive to that.
Yeah.
And maybe there's a need for a third definition.
Yes.
That's not encompassing others too. Thank you for bringing that up.
And maybe there's, yes, too little of distinction.
Dr. Rivers, then Councilman.
A clarification of something you just said.
Yes.
If you're having a not-for-profit, fill group home or halfway house?
If it is a home that houses, uh, individuals that are not related in that regard of eight or less and up to three caregivers, it can go in any, uh, single family zone here currently under state law.
Okay, so if it's like an orange grove.
Yes.
Okay. Otherwise, it has to be approved?
If it is a for-profit group, it has to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals and get a special exceptions permit under your current ordinance.
And do they have the right to not approve it?
They do.
And they have recently.
They have and we've gotten sued over that and we're dealing with that.
Wow, that's, yeah, well, so there are a couple that have come up that have gone in a couple of neighborhoods in my district. Who have gone in, they're halfway houses. They are for profit. In fact, there are some across the city owned by the same company.
Yes.
How is that allowed to happen?
If it's a zoning violation, then that zoning, zoning violation should be reported to the Land Development Office and they would deal with.
So your work, because we have a couple in District Four as well.
Yeah.
And you're working through that right now.
Yes.
There's a company out of Virginia or wherever that has moved in with halfway houses. And, and they were told they did not have to be approved.
Falling under state law.
Yeah.
Can I, um, mention, and, um, I think, and I just mouth to, to Brian, um, our observation has been that people are operating on a for-profit and then they would have to get a permit. And then they transition to 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(4) is the workaround.
It's just a tax designation, but it's.
Yeah, and that's the problem with state law right now. Yes.
Okay, I'm going to put, I'm going to put a pin in this right now because this is, this is an issue.
Yeah, that's a big issue.
Chris doesn't need to move on, uh, but I see Councilman Henderson and Councilman Smith.
Yeah, oh, oh, you.
I'm good. That's not good.
No, Councilman Henderson, you first.
So how do, how does, um, domestic violence shelters tie in with kind of the same thought? Because they're, they're, I guess I did realize they were allowed in R1s currently. They are?
I'll double check, but I believe so.
And when I talked about kind of the group homes and the, a low, um, a low barrier, that was one of them. We were aware or that was either someone who's interested or with idea that it is just people living in a home and trying to have a, you, um, and my memory of the discussion was you wouldn't want to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and saying, I have a domestic abuse shelter here. Where we're trying to let people, you know, leave a situation and not be aware. You know, having get flagged as here's a domestic abuse shelter that needs a special permit. We're trying to remove that and have it just a home, like similar to the group home exempt under state law. Because it's just, um, people living there while they're transitioning, um, from a situation. That was our thinking for that. Anything else on that one?
Councilman Smith?
I'm good. I'll wait. You, you stuck a pin in it. I feel.
I want to stick a pin in it because I'm going to ask you, if you would, let's, uh, let's dive into this deeper, maybe at the next planning and zoning.
The group homes.
Uh, the group homes definitions and have a better understanding.
We'll group them all.
Because I know we've got a lot to cover and then specifically.
Karen, sorry, I'm jumping in anyways. The idea of not-for-profit or for-profit, just for-profit doesn't necessarily mean they're not charging. They can easily say, I'm not making a profit.
Okay.
Right, so just.
Okay.
Clear definitions on that.
Yeah, because these are popping up all over town.
They are making a profit.
Yep, yes.
I do have a question before you leave this slide.
Okay. Uh, and we're, we're, Karen and I and maybe Dan, we're all making notes about these and, and plan to come back with answers to the, whatever we can't answer today, we will get answers to your questions. And, and this morning I offered to Chairman Ledford that we would do another one of these if, if you so desired. No problem.
Oh, desire.
I kind of, I kind of anticipated. Two hours is usually enough.
Special purpose zones, what is that mean?
We're going to get into those in just a second. I've got a whole slide that, that actually details all of this. So the Commercial Mixed Use Zones, um, the updates on these will allow, you know, I'll use an example of like Highway 58 is, is a great example of, you know, older antiquated zones that have led to a very wide road with a lot of surface parking up on the road and it feels like you're driving down a mile wide road. There are going to be new Commercial Mixed Use Zones in this zoning code that will allow some buildings right up, you know, against the street with a reasonable setback. But the building is close to the street, the parking is in the back, you can have interconnectivity. You've got different land requirements. East 23rd Street would be another location where we've got some, some new commercial zones that would fit in well there, as well as some transitional zones to buffer between the more intense uses and the neighborhoods. But to kind of be between them. So thinking about how one zone impacts another was a big part of this and it's why we have so many now. The industrial zones, uh, you know, they're, i- it's interesting that, uh, the industrial zones, now M1 is the most intense, but R1 is the least intense. Uh, so we, uh, to remove that confusion, we, we've gone to calling them, um, light and heavy. We also have, and, and light would be your assembly, things like that. Heavy would be, you know, your heavy, it would be your M1 today, it would be industrial heavy. And we also have a new industrial mixed use zone. We're seeing some of our industrial properties go to kind of a combination of warehousing or light assembly and also some residential or some commercial. Uh, and that would provide an option for that where it's appropriate.
Chris, would you use the word flex in there?
I would use the word flex. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we'll go to the, more of this. Alcohol and signs are two of the things that have been, uh, double regulated in Chapter Three for signs, Chapter Five for alcohol, and then both in Chapter 38 for zoning. You have an update to the beer code on your agenda for later in February that will be in front of you before this, that will address all the alcohol proposed changes. Uh, it's generally not good policy to govern something in two different chapters of the city code. It needs to have a home and, and the home for alcohol is Fi- Chapter Five and the home for signage is Chapter Three. Uh, we have begun the process, as Dan mentioned earlier, uh, in our spare time, uh, to also present a new Chapter Three, uh, a new advertising code, uh, that you'll be seeing soon, proposed. So we're moving those things to, to the homes where they should be. Administrative modifications process, this is a really popular thing, uh, so far with everybody. Right now, there's no mechanism for a minor modification for most code requirements. You have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for most things. And, you know, if you need a variance of just a few inches on a setback, you have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and what the.
Improve a hardship.
That's right. Thanks, Scott. Uh, the administrative mod- modifications process gives the Land Development Office the ability to give a 10% variance, uh, to most things. So, you know, if you've got a 10-foot setback and you've got a legitimate reason as defined by the LDO, you know, you can go to nine. And, and this is, you know, there occasionally there will be a situation where you've got a five-foot side setback and you've built the house and you're four feet, nine inches off the, off the property line. You have to tear the wall down under the law now. Uh, so this would give some minor modification ability to the staff. The new PUD process, right, you know, what PUDs have been used for, as we all know, is a density tool. And that's not what it was designed to do and that's not what we hope it will do in the future. Going forward, planned unit developments will be submitted as an act, as what it's supposed to be, a planned unit development that, you know, for example, could front load, you've got 10 acres and you want to front load most of your houses in these five acres over here because you want to use the other five acres to do a, a community park. And you want to do a trail or whatever you want to do there that's public amenity. And that would give the flexibility to actually do that and not just have a PUD because you want to go seven units per acre instead of five units per acre, which is.
Which we're seeing all the time now.
Almost every PUD that comes in, that's just a density tool. And that's not what it was designed to be and we've changed the wording on this and changed the process. Also, uh, minimum acreage goes away, uh, because each, each project will be judged on its own, uh, with no minimum acreage requirements. They would still, they still go to council. It's still ultimately your decision. It's ju- it's just a different form and hopefully one that works better for what you're looking for. And not just seeing it come as, I mean, now when you see a PUD on the agenda, you know, it's just to get more density.
As an example, um, most of you won't know of this, there's a project in Metro Atlanta called Ceremy that literally clustered 70% of the land into natural wooded areas. And then everything else was on 30%. You could do something like that in a PUD. That's what our PUDs should be doing. It should be encouraging.
Creating.
Radical innovation.
And it is going to lead to more green space preservation and mature tree preservation.
Better neighborhoods.
Hopefully. Uh, transit oriented and supportive development overlay. Dan, I'm going to defer to you for that one.
So, um, we've been working with CARDA and with our staff for, well, for the last two years to just look at all the places where transit oriented development might make sense in the future. Um, now that we have a new CARDA director in Charles Frazier, we'll be revisiting this. But in general, where we have corridors in the city that we know will always have bus service or maybe even have better service in the future. And bus rapid transit service like Brainerd Road, um, those are places where we would consider building in density now. So that when that, you know, that better service is available, there's folks that are there to get on the actual service. Um, if you put a upgraded service in some places today, there wouldn't be enough ridership there because we just haven't developed the community there. So this is just trying to be a little bit forward thinking on some of those corridors. We don't have to.
More changes, new definitions have been added. Most of these definitions currently in the zoning code were written in the 1960s. And, you know, some have been updated along the way, but also some have been updated in this section over here, but not this other section over here. So now we have these contradictions in our codes. The definitions are a little more, uh, uniform. We obviously still need to add some more and it's a working document.
Councilman?
So we have, the way I read it, new, um, my recommendations, new mandates on EV charging systems.
We're going to, if you'll, if you'll allow me, Councilman, we are going to address that and I'm going to make you happy.
Well, we're talking about environmental performances on this page.
That's, that's different, sir. This is about industrial sites that cause attention. I've heard you and we're, I agree with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, as of today, there's nothing, I think this is kind of a, and I'll let Phil chime in. You know, if we had a really difficult legal situation that involves something that, any of those things right there. And I live near a chicken plant, so I'll tell you, um, we already have some of these things in our community. This is just giving us a place where we actually say, we acknowledge that there's things that, about some uses that are just really awful. Um, and we should try to feel as a city government that we have the ability to deal with them.
And Alton Park would be an example of where you have some old industrial sites right next to R1 neighborhoods now.
Does self-storage qualify as really awful?
Yes.
No. The question becomes whether you become arbitrary or capricious under the current legal standard to, to do things and to announce that you don't want to like them.
We do have a slide on, I think it's coming up next. We, I talked about.
Self-storage building, yeah.
Okay. We've really tried to, like I said, when we opened up, we really tried in this presentation if we, we list, do the slides to cover a lot of comments that have been made.
There are 74 slides if we get through all of them and answer these. I don't, we, we don't intend to get through all of them, but if we can get into the, into the weeds, there are 74 slides that take us into the weeds. And we're on, uh, currently, uh, let's see, we're less than halfway through.
Ben, I'll just hear real quick.
Thank you. Um, the, the greatest amount of feedback that I've had from my, uh, constituents relates to minimum parking standards. Because as we look at the variety of housing that exists, um, some of the homes that are large homes that now are three to four unit homes would not be able to be built because of the parking standards. The same thing with missing middle housing projects, um, that would not be viable if they had to have that much onsite parking. So it's something I'd like us to look at with a fine tooth comb. Um, the same thing goes for minimum lot size with some of the, um, multifamily. Because again, we've got homes in, in North Chattanooga that are, I'm sure on lots of record, that are quadplexes, um, that we could never do that again. With one of the new McMansions, when somebody wants to remodel it right into a quad, it wouldn't be possible under this new code.
Because the minimum lot size is, is too large to be able to accommodate that use.
Exactly. And then the, uh, not allowing, um, in some of the zones, not allowing use of street parking. And I've even had people point out to me, you know, when you have parking on the street, it acts as a natural speed deterrent for traffic on the street. And, um, that's an interesting way to use our resources to slow traffic, um, just by virtue of people living there.
We, um, had, um, I think at the 400-plus comment suggestions, ideas, thoughts, um, I think we did, um, we talked, I think, Friday on the parking standards and not allowing, um, the on-street parking or use of on-street parking. Chris Davis is behind you, the only flagging that's been really helpful and he and his team going through and really trying to figure that out. Um, both of those got flagged as something to look at.
Okay, thank you.
And we have another session with Chris and his team in the Department of Public Works on Friday, Division of Transportation regarding parking and these minimums. So this is great feedback that we can incorporate into the discussion.
And one, um, we originally did not have, we weren't, we didn't carry the originally, the urban overlay over. But such a great tool for that parking reduction for one, um, one parking space for dwelling unit, um, that's in there. But we were trying to, we'd already reduced that about 20 years ago to continue that reduction. But, um, we'll look at, make sure we're.
And I guess while I have the floor, just, Councilman Henderson made the point about, could we add an, an R-zone that wasn't even larger lot size? I'd be interested in some thoughts on, could we add an R-zone that's an even smaller lot size? Um, we've got, that, that is a 35-foot lot or a 40-foot lot for some of these infills that would give us, um, smaller single-family homes. You'd be able to reasonably build a 750-square-foot home the way that, um, we did in Leapton City 100 years ago.
I think that, that's a very good point and I think the traditional residential neighborhood zones would accommodate what you and you, Councilwoman Kuhnrod, have said. You would like to see and probably you too, Chairwoman Dotley.
I think our.
There are some neighborhoods in your districts that would. There are some neighborhoods in your districts that will allow those traditional residential neighborhood zones that they are-
Three thousand square foot. We have a three thousand square foot. Yes, it is, the TRN three, a single unit detached allows a three thousand square foot minimum lot area.
Okay.
And those are not equivalent to any current zones, so they wouldn't be a part of the, the transition to a new zone, but they would be on demand, that they could, they could be rezoned to.
Right. And that would be kind of a post, like plan adoption.
Uh, so the-
I gotta go pick Peyton up from school, but just wanted to put on your radar. I do agree with what, um, Vice Chairwoman has spoke about, about the parking, cause District Nine constituents, specifically in Highland Park area, talked about that, uh, having parking for the dwellings. Um, and they also sent me a document, uh, parkingreform.org, of course, I think they reached out to you about that too, which was really helpful. Um, but the cemeteries in the open space zone, cause I'm having a lot of, um, small family cemeteries pop up in my, uh, district and they're complaining and what we found, Karen and I found is that the state is the say that they can do it. In the neighborhoods, like it's my house, a house and in the in-between of cemetery, that's what's happening in the neighborhoods. If we can kind of zone it to where-
Yeah, cause we found like three in Brainerd that had been there. If you Google, um, the state has them on a list, but we don't, they're just, was tiny lot just here and there, some-
And because of, you know, they designated it that, like, just last year.
Right.
They, one popped up, but they already had to use full cemetery.
Is that the state or do it?
I think that's the state, um, but one of the flags right now, I think a lot of them are zoned R1, so it's indistinguishable from any other land use. But if it was, um, it could be we're purposeful about going in and doing all the cemeteries, get the open space zones. It's a flag that something different is happening here. But we'll, we'll take a look at that one.
And then I just wanted to add container homes. To, uh, I know we got many factor homes, but it's a lot of container homes popping up too, that we don't have a zone for. Um, that's all I gotta go get this key.
And you like the container homes, right? You want an option for that.
Just a place where they could go.
So right now, right now for you, you don't have to.
So a container home can be built, anything can be built.
But you can attach a container apartment only to the ground.
He's bringing a container home village.
So the last section on, on this slide is, uh, special for Chairman Ledford, uh, exterior lighting controls. The new standards, uh, do, uh, require most cases of lighting to be focused down and not up towards the sky, but down to where the people are.
Full cutoff.
So I asked this in one of the meetings, I saw it in the chair, about the, um, dark skies, uh, policy that we see, I think maybe Nashville's operating under it, but, uh, is that something we are mirroring here? Are we trying to, uh, bring that online?
The, the, the principle is the same.
Principle's the same?
Maybe, we're not calling it that, but the principle's the same, yes.
We're borrowing from it.
To, to reduce light pollution in the skies.
It requires a full cutoff fixture, so that's kind of making sure it's, it's shaded and, and directed down.
We had an incident with, I think, and it's-
I have notes, like, will this solve that?
It does, um, it does address, I think, ball field lighting is part of the, um, exterior, exterior lighting.
Yeah, there's timers that still have to go on.
And does it address the type of, that's, I'm sorry, the type of light, does it address the type of light?
It does address the type of light, but I will look at something like a private, you know, um, field of some sort that's surrounded by neighborhood. I'll double check that. But yes, we had the discussion about that as part of this.
So, Councilman, if I could just say, this is the part that, um, so we, including Councilman Henderson's point about electric vehicle-
Yes.
Parking, um, this is kind of a, it's a page to talk about a lot of the things that are still hanging around that we would have.
Right, so there are, you know, we've had discussions, many discussions with you, you know, individually in these public meetings about policies that you specifically care about the most and, um, that's where we're still looking for some guidance. Obviously, this is your zoning code and you will change it as you see fit. Uh, and you, you are going to make amendments to this, we know that. But there are some specific areas where we'd like some guidance from you before we present the final document to you because we wanna make sure that it's to your liking. Uh, so we've, we've got some things in there now about standards for, um, design and development for commercial buildings. And we've gone back and forth on the minimum lot width for RM1-6. Um, recreational vehicle parking on residential lots, this is another that we feel like needs some more discussion among this body before we can make a recommendation. Self-storage, mini warehouses, another, you know, hot topic that we'd like to discuss more with you. Uh, I have heard you loud and clear, um, from my electric vehicle, I don't have an electric vehicle. There, i- instead of a requirement, uh, which some cities do, but most cities don't, uh, we are currently developing an incentive, uh, for commercial parking lots. Can, they can get a re- we're go- likely going to propose that they can get a reduction on their parking minimums if they do provide some EV capable or EV ready spaces.
And just to be clear, this was not saying they have to put in a charger. This is actually just saying they would have a space where someone in the future, we actually spoke to Charles Wood at the Chamber, he would've been, he wasn't in opposition to this, I guess, from a commercial standpoint. But I think, um, we, we do wanna respect what the council wants to do on that item. And then some of these other items, I think the thing about RV parking up there on residential lots is actually the idea of a tiny house on wheels or any RV, um, that would be able to be regulated. Cause we actually have a company in this county that manufactures tiny homes on wheels called Windy River, and they ship them out of state, cause they're not allowed here. But, so I mean, these are all things that we are looking for guidance on, including the self-storage. Um, I, I agree with Phil that, um, you know, we have to be very cautious about how we regulate any individual use. But I think it is interesting to think about what is a reasonable amount of self-storage units that we need for a certain sized community? Um, and so I think we would like to do that, look at where we have them today, where they're zoned today. Um, Karen, um, can you maybe touch on what the rules are?
Sure. Um, and this is one, the, um, right now, they're not permitted, it was a purposeful decision, um, by staff in talking to the consultants to not allow mini warehouses to self-storage on the, um, commercial corridor zone, which is most similar to the current C2 zone. The idea was to put them more in industrial, kind of industrial hybrid or, um, even come, kind of, um, regional commercial centers where there's a grouping of activity, but not just have them, you know, when you drive along a corridor with ideas, because the corridors, we do want a mix of uses and we're trying to, um, we're trying to encourage that. So, right now, the proposal just has, um, doesn't have them in probably that traditional C2 zone. It's now the CC zone. Um, that's what we're proposing. This is the idea, is that the right path? Would you want us to do something else? But, um, that was just kind of from the discussion, also hearing from some of the Planned Chattanooga meetings, just the number of warehouses that are, uh, mini warehouses self-storage that are, um, filling up those commercial corridors.
Those units probably currently have a vested right to stay where they are.
That's correct. And we will, um, to the frequently asked question about single, um, what happens in the R1 zone, we'll also do one, what happens with businesses, but under state law, businesses are allowed to, um, expand even after there's zoning changes. Um, and we'll just be clear about that, but that's what would happen to mini warehouses, is they would be able to stay.
Councilman Henderson?
I definitely would like to have some more discussion and figure out how we address this. I'm gonna give you a, a perfect example of where it should not be, and I don't know how the land got rezoned to C2 and, and would permit this, but down on the river, across the street from Lookout Valley Elementary School, at the marina, they have put up the ugliest self-storage units you've ever seen on the river. I mean, in, in a place that has no business having this kind of facility. Obviously, they had the right to because it was zoned that way, but somehow, we need to look at preventing that from happening. I have no problem with them going in a space where you have other buildings of black matter. This is so completely out of character with the neighborhood, with the development, with the landscape, with everything. Uh, the other thing is I would be a big proponent of offering an incentive for the EV charging spaces as opposed to it being a requirement.
One, one option kicked around on that is for a capable space, which means there's power available, 1.25 off of your minimums and for one that's actually got a charger too off of your minimums.
And, and for the, um, we can do, when we have that equivalency map, we kind of drafted it. We can kind of look at, um, where self-storage mini warehouses would go. The idea is with a regional center, you don't have a standalone one property by the river. Usually that would be a regional center, it would be, um-
On a major thoroughfare.
Yeah, major, like a, yeah, like a, uh, I'm thinking of like, uh, the intersection of like 153 and Hickson Pike as a regional center where there's similar uses clustered, um, or an industrial area. So I think that would address that problem, but we can check it through mapping.
Dr. Hertz?
Have you addressed, I haven't seen it yet, Karen, but it's something to think about, that the stuff that you and I have worked on, that transitional-
Yes.
Piece?
We do.
Okay.
And we have a slide and we can get to it now if, um, if we can, if, however you all wanna do it. There is a, two new zones, just a, um, and we use the example of East Brainerd Road between Lee Highway and Brainerd Hills as an example. We've had something similar on Miller Drive. Um, and these are areas, and we have two new zones, one's a neighborhood commercial zone and one's called a neighborhood, um, transition commercial zone. And the intention is to accommodate low intensity office and service uses as well as single unit dwellings. And that's between a commercial use and a residential neighborhood.
So it eases in-
That's correct. And that is the tool specifically to address, um, kind of those, that we have them a little bit all over. We have a commercial area transitioning to residential area. Usually it's an area that's loaded with conditions and the idea is to have a zone that ha- allows that easy transition.
Well, what I like about that and something you said earlier is people ought to have notice that this is a whatever zone. I think you mentioned it, so people aren't charged. Yeah, well, yeah, we want orderly building, but that doesn't mean close out the people. But they need notice, let's say in this case, from this block to this block, hey, we welcome you at Office O1.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, not, yeah.
And it's intended for that, we have a few areas where that's been the tool and has been a tool for a long time and we are intending to kind of maintain that tool, yes.
Good, thank you.
Before we move on, this might be one of the most important slides we see all day. So I would just say from our homework, our takeaway from this meeting is to, is to take notes about what we've talked about. Uh, talk to Chris, talk to RPA staff, um, and maybe at our next work session, cause I'm really feeling like we're going to have another one. Um, these issues may be even covered, addressed, or we can bring them back up. But this is a really important slide, just wanted to make note of that. Metamorphosis?
Yeah, I have something, um, that a constituent brought up to me that I'm so thankful, cause I never would've known to think about it. Um, apiaries?
Yes.
Is that how you say that?
Apiaries.
Apiaries? Um, the code, yeah, it's a bee hive. Um, and the, this new code, I don't know if this is the way it is in the current code or not, but says that hives must be set back twenty-five feet from all lot lines. But then there's also guidance within the, uh, or requirements that when the apiary is located within a yard not bounded by a solid wall, a flyway of at least six feet in height comprising et cetera, et cetera. So that the bees fly up, not out. Um, and the constituent pointed out the fact that having to have a twenty-five foot setback from every lot line would potentially, um, limit a lot of people from being able to have an apiary, um, when in fact, just having the requirement of the wall likely would prevent any issue. So perhaps we could look at a five foot setback, um, and then leaving in the requirement of the, of the wall.
Okay. And we, um, do not currently regulate apiaries under zoning. So we kind of went back and forth on this one and found out they're regulated under that Tennessee Apiary Act, which we did not know. Um, and so, um, I think we didn't have a ton of experience with this, we just had to do some research, so yes.
So does the Tennessee Act require us to have the twenty-five foot setback?
Um, I don't think so. I think you have to register with them and then let, you know, if something happens to the hive, I think, is my understanding.
Okay.
But yes, but we can, um, we'll double check that one, but yes.
Thank you.
We were just, for, I mean, five, I would be a beehive and you would be your, your, your property line. I, I guess as, we, we're about five feet apart here, we were trying to be respectful of neighboring properties.
Well, but then also requiring a flyway of at least six feet in height comprising of a lattice fence, dense hedge or similar barrier, so you wouldn't see it. So this constituent, for example, has bamboo, so you wouldn't, five feet from here, you wouldn't see the bamboo, you wouldn't see the, and it's for them to go upward. So your dog wouldn't be able to fuss at that hive either way because there'd be a six foot and it has to go two feet past the hive also.
He wouldn't do that anyway.
He wouldn't, cause he's a very good dog. Somebody's dog might.
Well, we'll check the state regulations and then we did get somebody, um, input from somebody who lives in the city that has an apiary, so.
Cool. Maybe it's the same person.
Yeah.
Chris, how far do you wanna try to make it today?
I got a couple.
Hang on one second, how far do you wanna try to make it today?
Up to y'all, as far as you wanna go.
I'd like to go since we have another.
We're, we're good, I'm just trying to figure out how far we're going.
He was asking about how far into the slots.
Yeah, I have one comment left to make.
Oh, we still got more slots?
Oh, we have about another, we're gonna go, we can go through every district and everything.
Oh, well, I just seem like another place to, I, that was-
It would've been a good place, ending place.
That's a good ending place.
I thought that's what it was.
We have a section of document specifics where we get into the weeds a little more, it's what I was referencing earlier. We've got nearly forty slides like that, we can hit some of those. I think Dan wants to say something first.
Y'all have seen before if we had any individual meetings with you, um, and we can come back for another work session and go through all those details. And then if you'd like, you can do whatever you want.
So, then one of the slides, cause I asked earlier about, I think it was a special use or something.
Yes, special term.
Special zones.
Yes, special zones.
Is that, you got a slide for that?
We do.
Okay, so I wanna ask questions about that.
Well, we can skip to that just because there's, I think there was some interest in, um, some of the overlays and what happened to them, so.
I got a follow-up to that.
Okay.
I think I do. Unless you cover it. Um, so urban agricultural zone.
We-
So, well, that's A1 though. So, let me just ask this question, back to the slide about what you'd like to discuss. I would like to bring, call them whatever you want, backyard chickens, whatever, allowed in some of these residential zones, whether it's, if we put in a seventy-five hundred square foot zone, the six thousand square foot home, uh, zone. I don't know that they would be appropriate for a five thousand square foot zone, but I would like to, while we're introducing this, because we've had people come, and, and I have emails quite frequently, uh, from constituents that would like to be able to keep chickens in their backyard. So we might as well tackle it now and address that again while we're going through all of these zones. So, yes, that one is one I would like to discuss at another work session.
Now he's helping you ordinate, he just puts it on Chris.
Councilman Henderson knows what size lot you have.
One, one point eight acres, I think is what you have.
It's one point, I think it's one point five, one point five.
Pretty good to address it by reducing it to some acreage that council can agree to.
There lies your problem.
Well, but, but here's the problem, most of the people that would like to do it are just in a regular standard lot size. Which if we do the seventy-five hundred square foot, then I, I don't know, maybe that takes care of a lot of the problems. But I, you know, because I've got a feeling, most of the city's gonna wind up going to a six thousand square foot lot size. But-
We can, we can do some analysis if you like and look at where different lot sizes are across the city and maybe come up with a recommendation.
Okay. Can we take a look at Red Van and see how it's working over there?
Sure. I have a copy of their, of their ordinance and it's, it's not a, it's not that much different from what you and I worked on a few years ago, Councilman. It's, I mean, they've got rules about, you know, how big the coop has to be and how far off the property line it has to be.
We will make a recommendation.
Waste concerned and that kind of stuff.
But, but McCamey doesn't want to permit or, I mean, get, do, so, I mean, we're gonna have to address that.
I just wanna jump in with Chip on that one, Councilman Henderson on that one. As much as I, I don't, don't like to see them, they are there and people have them and they are beneficial. Uh, I live in Eastlake, there's a rooster crow in my yard every morning. I don't have one, but my neighbors have them and plenty of my neighbors have them. And as we look at some of the cultural differences, that's important for us to really, when we talk about the equity framework, that is another space where, whether they're in Lookout Valley, whether they're at Eastlake, they have them. And then, so how do we regulate them? Because it is, you know, food costs going up, you know, would I rather have a chicken at the house dropping a egg? I don't know what they do, drop the egg. drop and eat, I don't know what they do, drop the egg, whatever they do.
Like lay eggs.
Or, or, you know, go to the store and pay five dollars for eggs. So it's just those type of lay eggs. Uh, so, so as much as I am, do you want to touch the subject, I think, at this point in my life, in the life of all my neighbors on, on Thirteenth Avenue? I think it is time for us to really look at that and say, you know, how, look at the yard size, look at the house, the lot size and say, what, what is amenable, uh, in these cases? And I think it'd be easier for code enforcement, easier to regulate. Because I've called about these roosters and chickens multiple times and they are still there. If you go to my house right now, they're in my yard. So, but they're with my neighbors across the street. So being able to actually regulate those and, um, I think that also plays into a big equity, equity piece as well, so. Yeah, I just wanna, so you, you gotta co-sponsor if you.
We do have, we do have stock equines, uh, as an accessory use that then should pop, starts to pop up in different zones. And it could be it's treated the same way, it's an accessory use and then figuring out what zones it's appropriate, what, what standards.
Okay. Dr. Burges?
So, I think all of this is good and I don't disagree with the chickens. What I hear over and over again, and I know it's a broken record thing, but guys, we can pass all the laws in the world with good intent. We have a terrible problem in our city with enforcement. That's not a criticism of the people. It's that our enforcement arm, it's, it's embarrassing, it's a joke, not, again, not the people, they're working as hard as they can. We don't, we don't seem to get the requests, or maybe council could engender the fact that if you're gonna pass ordinances that are really good, and let's say these are all really good, unless you have enforcement of them, so that we can keep our city green or clean or whatever it is. Unless you have enforcement, it becomes a joke. Or a nuisance, or, or it's ruining, it's ruining the good stuff that can happen. Because unfortunately, we have citizens of all ilk who think that rules are right for everybody but them. And frankly, they're correct. We just heard the chair say again, she's called several times about, and the chickens are still there. I don't think you criticize people, you criti, you, you take a look at, at redoing systems. And if we have a system that doesn't allow for the enforcement arm to do their job well, then it's a joke. And these are not, these are good people who are hampered by, um, are the realities of we don't fund them sufficiently to do their job.
I think that's right, Councilwoman, and, you know, goo, good enforcement requires a lot of pieces. One of the pieces is funding to have enough, you know, enforcement.
Yes, it is.
Officials to cover our very large geographic area that we have. Another is to make sure that any ordinance that's passed has a tangible, objective, not subjective measure, measure of enforcement. Sometimes we get into trouble when we leave too much up in the air for interpretation by inspectors. One thing we try to do in this code is to make it very clear, very easy to understand, using numbers, diagrams, things like that. So there's less interpretation down the road when it comes to enforcement.
The other thing we don't do, and I know this is something that we should, and I've said it before, we don't talk about fiscal notes. What's the note, what's it gonna cost, the fiscal note, to, um, to pass this law? The fiscal note is what's it gonna cost overall, guys? And that includes, um, hiring people to enforce it. So, everything we pass needs to have a fiscal note. There are some things that require nothing. But every time we get an ordinance, we just pass them without being sophisticated enough to talk about, what is the fiscal note for passing this? It's not that we can't do it, it's, it's rearranging budget, so we can do it. You know, what does yes look like? Well, part of it, the reality is a fiscal note. Otherwise, it just kind of sits there. And that's what makes it a joke to people who might not be as good as citizens as we are. Okay, enough, just bringing it up again.
Chris, before you end up, Dan?
Um, should we hit something, Chris? Okay. Um, first of all, I want to say Councilman Hester, since, uh, we've had a lot of discussion today, I want you to know, um, we are not in a hurry, um, we are wanting to do this right. If you have a, uh, neighborhood, uh, community or a homeowners association, not every, not everybody has a neighborhood association. Some of you have like just a homeowners association, so if you have anybody that you want us to come meet with in your community, we will absolutely go meet and talk about Plan Chattanooga, talk about zoning ordinance. Um, because we want to have a lot, we, we have a meeting at the Family Justice Center this week on Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And then a virtual one.
And then we have a virtual online zoning public meeting on Thursday, um, that we can send that out to more folks, so, so, because we want folks to know about this. Again, um, from, you know, again, this is my two-year anniversary this month, so again, I'm gonna just bring up, I've observed a lot since I've been here, and I will tell you, this zoning ordinance is holding us back. It's holding us back from jobs.
Correct.
And it's holding us back from higher tax revenue, from places that are just underzoned and underused. The Bend is a great example, where some of the, you know, it's a, as an example, it's been sitting there as a site for how long? And, you know, hopefully in ten years, it'll be different. But again, I feel like our zoning holds us back on jobs and economic growth, but it also is holding us back on housing. It's absolutely a creating, our housing issues in this city and county are a little bit complex, I'll tell you. There's a lot of things happening. You throw in the Federal Reserve with interest rates and all these things. But again, the zoning is holding us back on, on having more housing opportunity. Ten years ago, in the housing market, only ten percent of people that were buying a house were buying a new house. Because ninety percent of the market was just people, you know, buying a u, a home that's already been built. Today, it's thirty percent. Because so many people have low-interest zone, loans, or their investors have bought things, so we need more housing. Um, and we need more housing, not just for affordability, we need more housing for different types of lifestyles. Um, I, some of you don't know, but I have a triplex that is right now occupied by my daughter, four other women, and a two-and-a-half-year-old little girl. So.
Not in Chattanooga?
No, not in Chattanooga. It's, it's a pre-existing historic, it was built in the fifties. It was, uh, cut up in the sixties, and the only reason I bought it is because I had a zoning letter from the county from nineteen seventy-two that said it's a legal non-conforming triplex. Couldn't build it anymore. We need to be more, you know, just attentive to what our needs are going forward. Um, we didn't talk about this today, but I'll talk about it next month. We've done projections for growth and we know where every vacant piece of land is in this county. We have unlimited data and we're gonna continue to grow for the rest of this century. I tell people every day, all the time, we have forty-five thousand kids in the public schools, ten thousand more in private schools, twenty-five thousand in, in college or whatever here. A lot of them are gonna stay. They're gonna be here, and I think we want them to stay, dude. So again, I, I just say that to say that this is very important. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thanks.
Councilman?
So, one, one request, and I know it was mentioned about, um, like, once we approve it, I'm just trying to use those words. Once we approve these new zones, when this would take effect, or when we would start seeing these requests for these new zones? And I have, um, concerns about starting to approve these new zones before we actually have a map. I would like to see a complete zoning map in place before we start considering requests for these new zones.
Makes sense.
And I don't know how long it'll take to get a new map, but, but I think that ought to be the sequence. Okay, great.
Paul Sacks has a, an area plan.
I don't think it'll take longer to get the maps than it will take to train our staff on the new zones anyway, so that probably can happen concurrently with no issue.
I just don't want to start approving a new zone until I have a map to look at.
And we would work with timing on when we finish the, um, start taking applications. We just need to make sure we back it up and, um, let people know.
Council, um, you want to go on and go to three o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think the next ones are mine, we're getting, so this is getting into a little bit more of the specific regulations, um, and some of them, right, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, let me get. So, um, the conditional zoning, we did already talk about, um, that it would move over. This is just, this is just language in there regarding conditional zoning, um, but we did talk about in equivalency mapping, moving that over.
Here, real quick, let me go back, because when I read that, I feel like Phil wrote it, so.
You still have your ability to make conditions on property.
You still have the conditions, even if it moves over to a new zone, from let's say R-one to R-one, uh, six.
Equi, through the equivalency zone.
Conditions that came over, they transfer over.
That's correct.
So there's protections are still in place.
Right, and we have a process underway to, um, kind of extract them from the zoning map now to flag that they'll need to be checked.
Okay.
And also, your, your, your state law given right to do conditional zoning is not impacted in this new code. What we hope is that, you know, we've taken the last several years of conditions you've applied and tried to implement them directly into the zones where they've been commonly applied, so you'll find it less necessary.
So what you're talking about is zone, are conditions such as buffering or fans or things that we see repeated, 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 are now standards, so we don't have to, because it gets tricky. When you're out there, when we talk about protecting trees, Madam Vice Chair, a lot of times it's up to us to catch that buffer or increase that buffer, or even had a requirement. I mean, I had one recently where I, I mean, I asked nicely for a big old oak tree. Now, is that a condition that's enforceable? Yeah, maybe, but you know what, I worked with a developer. And, but I had to do that, otherwise that tree could have come down. It's a gorgeous old tree, oh my goodness, the thing is massive. And, um, that falls on the shoulders, but I think it should fall into the code based on what we all care about in our, in our districts and, and use our, our, uh, input with the conditions, so I throw that out there.
Phil, let me ask you this.
Yes?
In changing, in, in moving conditions from the old code to the new code, can we write something in that says if we happen to miss one, it, it, it still applies, you know what I'm saying?
Like basically an errors and omissions policy?
Yeah, like if, like if this piece of property had a condition on it, but then when we moved it over, we somehow overlooked it. And now they're wanting to do something that wasn't allowed before. Can we put some kind of clause in there that says just because we overlook it doesn't mean that it's not, you know, still in effect?
Well, the, the conditions that are on the property need to be there. The, the Board of Zoning Appeals cannot amend those conditions here by your ordinance that you have in effect right now. The provisions.
That's not my question.
I understand, but you're saying, can we add something that says a catch-all, correct?
Well, in, in changing, in, in converting over from the old zone to the new area.
Um, we had talked about yesterday having a transitional section from the old code to the new code. Um, and it could be the section there just confirms the conditional language during the transition from the code and map to the new code and map. We realized there might be a need just to be really clear what's happening as we're making that transition, and it could be that's where that section is.
Especially if it's between the time that you're creating the map originally and then you're doing conditions on other properties in the meantime, before you actually adopt the zoning ordinance.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about once the map's been approved, the zoning codes have been approved, two years down the road, somebody wants to do, somebody does something on that piece of property that, oh, that condition's not on here any longer, but it existed in the old code.
Right.
I'm saying, can we say somehow?
We can say all.
If it existed in the old code, regardless of whether it gets in the new code, it still applies.
If it's a condition, it was probably part of the zoning case.
And, but through the ordinance, we pull the ordinance.
The zoning cases aren't going to.
Well, I can just see, I can just see somehow something, somewhere down the road.
Well, that.
An error not being transferred and, and now because of a mistake, somebody can do something that was never intended to happen.
That's still subject to your investigators or your inspectors who are looking at it to be able to find that, so that, that's the other problem that you have.
You're saying if we don't catch it.
No, I'm saying that you can put the catch-all language in here, it may be difficult to enforce sometimes if they don't have all the documents.
But again, there's no difference that if we didn't do anything and three years from now, they lost the condition. There's, there's, there's no reason through this update of this code, they should lose a condition.
Well, uh, well, okay.
But we'll, 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 we'll make a note of that, we will absolutely go investigate that.
Okay.
He, he, human error is, is, it's, I see where, I see where you're at, Councilman.
I mean, it is going to happen.
We'll blame it on Brian.
Um, just go back, I think, one, for the administrative modification process, um, we already hit on this, but just because we have Board of Zoning Appeals, um, members here, I wanted to note that, um, there's, it talks about the interaction with the Boarding and Zoning Appeals member, that if you get denied that LDO, you can still go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They still have that, um, that, that power, so, um, if, if LDO denies a one, one percent variance, you still have the ability, an applicant can still go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, so there is still, that, there's not, not taking away from that, and you're not required to get the administrative modification first. You can go straight to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, maybe keep going, I think we've hit some of these. Um, development standards have been added, so, um, this is a little bit new for us. We're, we're trying to, again, um, reduce the need for zoning conditions, so development standards have been added for non-residential development. And they're not, um, designed, they're more about how the physical development of that, of that building. So it's articulation, orientation, you want a, um, an example might be having a pedestrian entrance to the street. This is already what we have as part of, um, some, um, like the UGC already has that requirement. Um, roof design, um, there are building material standards. There are also development standards, so they're starting to back off as you get to single-unit detached, which is talking about the primary entrance, um, garage location transparency requirement. So that does apply to single-unit detached and. Um, this is where, um, the garage cannot be, um, in front of the house by.
Can't be a bump-out garage.
Yeah. Um, is that, it needs to be, I think it's below, at least recessed from the main plane of the house.
At or behind the main plane of the house.
And I can pull the exact language if you want to take a look at that. That is, that is proposed in.
Councilman, seeing your face, sir.
Yeah.
There's, there's lots of house designs that.
Their entire neighborhoods in East Brainerd that are, the main focus is a garage.
I'm not sure I agree with that.
Finding the front door is a challenge, but it's somewhere in there.
I mean, I agree with standards, don't get me wrong, but that's not one of them.
And, um, we can, um, do, we'll, we can pull out each of these and be really clear about which of the uses is getting what standard. There's, I think, a chart here, but we can, we can, um, and put what that standard is. And then you, maybe be a little bit more clear for y'all to look at. I know this is a.
Sounds like for the next session.
Yeah, this is a lot, I know on one slide, but we'll have, we can have a slide a little bit more particular to the sheets or the situation.
So you're saying they cannot put a garage on the front of their house?
They can put a garage, it cannot be, um, it can, it, it needs to be kind of recessed behind the rest of the house. I think it's one foot.
Garage can't be the front of your house.
Is it one foot wide?
You just had a garage, if the entire front of your house was a garage, that would not be permitted. You can't have a garage house.
The focus is to try to make a front door or a front porch or front entryway more prominent feature instead of the first thing you see is a garage and then there's a door somewhere down a long wall.
A planner would call it a snout house.
Snout house, yeah, I've, I've heard that term before. When we were driving around, um, with some of the, um, folks from, um, Camero's, I believe, they, they were noticing, they, actually, I didn't really notice that, they've been pointing out that quite a bit. And, um, they were talking about some of the, I guess, the downsides of, of having that type of neighborhood where other neighborhoods having more of a prominent front door or front porch created.
It is a little bit related to parking question, because again, from our standpoint, in light of mine, we, I would not be regulating parking at all. I mean, I'd be finding folks anyone owning a car. Um, but I think in this case, we just don't want a neighborhood to look like garages. It's just, it's just not gonna.
Well, they are hoarding all the bounds.
Nobody will build it in Ringville.
Okay, so we'll, um, we will be a little bit more clear and be able to focus on that language than for the next.
Yes. And then these standards honestly have come also largely from council comments and conditions over the last few years. And you're, this is something that needs to be delved into more with you. And these standards honestly have come also largely from council comments and conditions over the last few years, and you're, this is something that needs to be delved into more with you.
So parking, in the items that are highlighted in gray as we work through are just items that receive comments, questions. You know, it might be something like, please explain. No, it's not a mark, well, this, this was purposely marked through. These are just things that have been flagged as questions or comments, or can you give us an example of what's going on here? So we've already talked about the minimum parking standards. A minimum number of bicycle parking spaces required for most commercial uses. We did get quite a few comments. One was, I think we had thirty-six bicycle parking spaces required for a golf course.
That's right.
So we did have feedback. I think the person said probably not. So we have gone and taken a look at the bicycle parking space requirement.
May I add something about that? When I was at the city's conference in Atlanta, I heard some conversation about, about that and, and some conversation about, well, sometimes it can seem foolish to have a bicycle requirement. And one example was a bicycle requirement at a, a car wash, right? And that that seemed very silly. But then they kept noticing that there were bicycles there because the people who worked there had bicycles. So let us not jump to conclusions too quickly about when someone will or will not approach something on a method of transport other than a vehicle. So thirty-six might be high, but thirty-six.
There's different screen required within an auction. I mean, if your workers ride a bike or a rack out, put some space out for your workers. And require a place to put them in and then have nobody use them.
To that point, let's be real thoughtful about our parking minimums.
And then I think we're trying to, a-again, not trying to have too many regulations. I think we're gonna reference the bicycle standards, the city standards for bicycle parking. They're already out there, will be out there. And I'm looking at Chris to make sure I've got the right language, but with the idea, there's already something the city is working on and we're just planning on referencing that. Shared parking provisions have been simplified. This is, we've had shared parking over time with the idea that if you have, like, an example would be dissimilar uses and I'm parking during the day and you're parking in the evening, that you could share parking, and there's agreements about that, and that's still in there. And then off-street parking standards reference the city standard drawing series. That's again, instead of describing it in the ordinance, we're referencing the city standard drawings. And then we have new policies encouraging pervious pavement and adaptive reuse. So the idea that if you're using pervious pavement, I believe it's a slight reduction in the parking.
The new electric vehicle charging states with thirty, uh.
Yes.
Spaces is supposed to be changed. What type of change?
So we're, we're gonna move from, and this is the mayor's wish, for us to move from a stick to a carrot. And then instead of having a requirement that's baked into the code, rather, an incentive, you get more credit towards your parking minimums if you have an EV capable or EV ready. There'd be a, a difference in how many credits you would get on your parking minimums.
Councilman.
And the last slide, the new policies encouraging pervious pavement, can it not be tied to stormwater?
It does, it is.
It is too?
And I think the language is that it, it is something about whatever the standard is of stormwater or something about stormwater sign-off and review.
It is, and we've had the LDO at the table with.
Well, that'd be a financial issue.
Yeah. It's intended to specifically kind of put it in there, there.
Council, it is three o'clock. Chris, how many slides do you want?
We can pick this back up, landscaping's kind of a big topic, so probably can't do it in sixty seconds.
Do you think we want to put a pin in this for today? Yes. Will Council? Absolutely. Yeah, that's a great question, Dr. Burz. We're gonna get this on the schedule. Let me look at the schedule and get us back into another work session as soon as Chris and, and staff and everyone has a chance to go over our notes. Council, thank you for your attendance today. Thank you for your feedback. I can tell that you've, you've read this. You're, you're asking great questions. Chris, will you talk a little bit about some of our peer review through stakeholders and where we're at with that? I think it's a good point to mention that a lot of people are looking at this, and I think it's a good point to bring that up, and then we'll close out and then pick a time to do another work session.
Thank you, Chairman. And I've heard from some of you about this. We have engaged people in the industries that work with this code. That's not just builders, but, you know, commercial contractors, architects and engineers. They've been really helpful and, you know, they've not come to us with any big changes, but they've come in with, this needs to be reduced by three, and this actually doesn't work because of this thing in the field. And, and that's been some real-life applications that we've been able to infuse into this and make changes already, and we're continuing those conversations. Several of you have asked if we had met with the industries and we have. And they've been, I mean, they're the experts, right? And they've been, they've been really helpful about what works and doesn't. We've had several meetings with them.
Council, any further questions for today? Thank you for your participation. This has been fantastic. I appreciate everybody coming. We'll adjourn and we'll go into session. Thank you, everyone.